Good evening, and thank you for joining us. I call this meeting of the Stoughton Select Board, November 16th, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. to order, and ask that if you're able to, please rise and join us in saluting our flag. In compliance with the Governor Baker's Declaration of June 16th, 2021, extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted by the State of Emergency and extended until April 1st, 2022, this meeting will be conducted in both person, at the Great Hall, Town Hall, and virtually via Google meets for those which participate remotely. Due to potential technical difficulties with virtual meetings, it is requested that anyone wishing to speak attend the meeting in person or send any comments to the Select Board office by 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting. If at any time the meeting, there are audio issues or other technical difficulties during the portion of the meeting, it will be closed in person and will continue. The address for the Google meets is listed here. The meeting will be recorded by Smack Cable Television and may be broadcast live and be livestreamed at www.stoughtontv.org. A recording of the meeting, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceeding will be posted on the town's website and Smack as soon as possible after the meeting. If live broadcast or livestreaming is unsuccessful, times are approximate, and items may be taken out of order at the chair's discretion. So with that, I will go into our first order of business is citizens' requests. Is there any member of the public that would like to be heard? Ms. Walsh, please come forward, identify yourself for the record.
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street. This is a request, and I've made this request in the past. The 300th anniversary of Stoughton is rapidly approaching, so what I'm, my request is that when you are considering the budget or articles for the annual, that you either put money in the rec budget for, specifically for the 300th birthday celebration, or that you have a separate article. The sooner we do this, we could do in just small increments, $1,000, $1,500. I don't think we need a lot of startup money. We've done this before for anniversaries. But the sooner we start, the more successful the celebration will be. Thank you.
I believe, Ms. Walsh, I believe we passed the article a couple of years ago establishing that, and we just now need to start funding it. But we didn't because COVID came in right after, the year after, and we tightened down the budgets and we held a little bit. But there was an article to establish a fund, so I believe we can start. I'll look into how we can start, but we'll take that into consideration when I present you.
That must have been before I come on, that was taken.
It was, yeah, I believe it was maybe spring of '20?
Right.
Or spring of '19, maybe? It was not long after I came on that.
Well, let's, let's look into that, and you know, I agree. You know, as Ms. Walsh is well aware, there were a bunch of us that got together for the 275th, and we, we had some nice times, you know, but we did a lot of fundraising. We did a lot of pumping the well dry, in some cases, to do that. So I agree with you, Cynthia. It would make it a lot easier. And we should actually advertise for a committee as well, so that we could sell.
And I think a committee would be good, because if we want outreach to local businesses that might want to be part of this and join and partner with us on this and help sponsor, I think a committee separate from town officials would be, would be wise.
Right. No, and I guess I would say that if there's anybody interested in serving on the committee for the 300th anniversary of the town, please look me up, give me a call, and we'll start getting people together.
Consider this your call. I think you should have a couple of veterans on that committee.
Well, we'll, we'll open it to everybody, Ms. Walsh. Who applies? We can't control, but I agree with you. I hope that the town reflects the people that live in it.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so with that, anybody else? Anybody else have citizens' comments, selectmen's comments? I'll start with Mr. Gito.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a couple of comments. The town manager sent out the warrant for, for the special town meeting today, and I looked at it and noticed something that, to me, was kind of disturbing. More than kind of. At page 220, there is discussion of Article 9, and on page 221, there are recommendations by three town meeting committees. The Finance Committee voted 15 to 0 to take no action, as the article was not assigned. The Intergovernmental Relations Committee said the article was not assigned per the Rules Committee, and the Municipal Regulations Committee said the article was not assigned to the committee per the Rules Committee. Now, I had heard something about this before, because my wife is on the Rules Committee. She is a precinct chairman. And there has been a violation of the town charter. It's very clear. It's unambiguous. The Board of Selectmen has the responsibility, along with public citizens, to submit articles for the town meeting, for the annual and the special town meetings. And the Board of Selectmen, Select Board now, can call a special town meeting when it wants to, and did, and submitted an article, Article 9. The Rules Committee asked the town council whether or not that article was legal or not Town Council indicated to the Rules Committee that the article was legal, and furthermore indicated, in the question that was asked about one town meeting, binding another town meeting to its decisions when there was no bylaw. Town Council said that one, one town meeting could not bind another town meeting to its The Rules Committee read that letter, said they didn't agree with it, and did not send the articles to any of the committees that they should have. Thus, the three recommendations from the three committees that appeared on page 221 of the warrant, or the, the town meeting report, Finance Committee report. Let me read you some information on what the Rules Committee is supposed to do. Again, the Rules Committee is made up of the town moderator and the precinct chairman. There shall be a town meeting committee on rules, consisting of the moderator, who shall be the chair, the deputy moderator, ex officio, and each precinct chairman. All warrant articles, all warrant articles, shall first be referred to the committee on rules, which shall subsequently refer the article to the appropriate standing committee or committees for public hearing and recommendations to the town meeting. Now, it didn't say the Rules Committee may subsequently refer the article to the appropriate standing committee or committees. It said "shall." "Shall" is a very firm ruling in the law. The standing committee must deliver all warrant articles referred to them to the town meeting for action on the floor. Further says, "No floor action may be taken at town meeting without a public hearing and a standing committee report on the article." So, the only conclusion that I can come to is that the Rules Committee thinks that it can determine what articles from either a citizen of the town or the Board of Selectmen will appear at town meeting. The framers of our charter were smart enough to use the words "shall" and "must" to make sure that it was absolutely clear that the citizens of the town and the select persons were able to get items before the town body to make a decision on, without any interference by any committee of the Finance Committee or any other town meeting committee. I think it's despicable, not just an unfortunate circumstance, that that would occur. I don't know what action the Board of Selectmen should take. I would suggest that the material that I have read from be distributed to every town meeting member as they come into town meeting and when Article 9 comes before us. I would suggest that the Board of Selectmen vote to dismiss the article because it is not needed. We can dismiss the article because it's not needed, because we didn't need to put that in to begin with, because one article could not, one town meeting could not change what another town meeting was going to do. So by dismissing it, we get to the point that we want to get to, which is to leave that money where it is. But at the same time, we let every member of town meeting and every member of, every citizen of the town know what has happened in this particular instance. That is an absolutely bold and brazen attempt to not have the citizens of the town or the Board of Selectmen be able to present articles that need to be heard. I am appalled.
Thank you, Mr. Gito. And I 100% agree with your sentiments and all your words. In some cases, we have other issues, you know, that continue to, to be played by some individuals behind the scenes where, you know, they may not agree with something that's been brought forward, and, and then it, it's the way it's presented and the way it's described to some people, you know, is not a good thing. So we will deal with those accordingly, and we hope that every person, whether they come here, is able, you know, to put aside their personal agenda and stay focused on, when we're here, all of us to volunteer, we're here to do what's best for the residents of the town as a whole and not our personal agendas. And unfortunately, in, in some areas, it's still alive and well. So, all right. On that, any questions on that issue? Anybody question Mr. Gito at all? Anything else, Mr. Gito?
I do have a couple of other.
Sure, go right ahead.
Lesser things, I would say. Not really lesser. We need to start dealing with the budget. We have until the third week in January, apparently, to present a budget to the Finance I've been talking about this since September. I'm not planning to spend any more time talking about it. But what I would like is a plan and a timeframe when we're going to meet. If we could put together some sort of a, here's what we're going to do, and here's how we're going to do it, it would be awfully nice. So that's one item. The second item relates to Page Street. There has been a substantial increase in traffic on the portion of Page Street, I believe, between the old dump and the, and Turnpike Street. And I would suggest to the town manager that you might want to ask the town engineer what his thoughts are on that, whether there should be a traffic study, whether we should put together something that relates to widening that street, doing whatever needs to be done. I mean, it's, it's remarkable, the amount of traffic just on that short mile section of road. And I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's going to maintain itself for an awful long time if we don't do something about that. Thank you.
I'll talk to Mark. Thank you.
Yeah, we have on, on the budget, I've talked with the town manager, is setting something up, but with everything that's been going on, you know, it's been eating up more time, as I was just saying to you, how the days go flying by. And every time you think you're going to be able to move on to the next thing, two other things happen that prevent you. So we are discussing that to get the process set up and, and moving forward.
Thank you.
So hopefully, we're again scheduled to meet this week, just for about a half hour, 45 minutes.
Show me the money.
I know, I know, I'm just, like I said, we haven't, I just don't want you to think that we're, I'm totally ignoring it, because we do, and I'd rather get it done when we can spend a little bit more time on it than instead of being under the gun, like everything seems to be lately.
Right.
So, and yeah, the Page Street, you know, 90% of that traffic that comes off there comes out of the town of Avon, as you're well aware. You know, that's the, the Broadway Street development, and if you remember years ago, with that, just as a, as a fact, matter of fact, is that when we put up the, the construction and demolition plant, we were in a meeting with the Secretary of Environmental Affairs to put that building up, and a former senator had mentioned to the secretary that he believed that because Stoughton has the plant, and Avon has the official truck route, because the truck route for that facility is through the Avon Industrial Park, that if Stoughton's going to benefit from it, the Avon should share in some of that revenue, because they're the truck route. And I stood up to the Secretary of Environmental Affairs, and I said, "Mr. Secretary, I couldn't agree with the senator and our colleagues in the town of Avon anymore." I said, "So if they're willing to, you know, reciprocate the same way," I said again, and I went through at the time the truck trips, and it was like at the time, I believe, 70,000 truck trips a day. I said, "If they'll share their revenue from the Avon Industrial Park with the town of Stoughton, we'll definitely share the 15 trucks that are going to go into the facility." So it's, there's definitely a disproportionate amount of traffic that does come out of that area, that we have the burden of fixing the road, which we just did recently. The entire intersection of Page and Turnpike Street was, was done because there was actually, you know, a gutting of the road, where if you were in the right travel lane, you could see the road just being, you know, it's a perfect indentation into the road because of the weight of the trucks coming out of there. So we're, we're dealing with that cost, that road, and I agree with you, if anything, we should be adding a couple lanes to that road, but that's going to take some significant land takings to be able to do that. So it's something we have to be aware of, but I think it's good to have the engineer look into it, give us an idea of what that could be.
Yeah, I, I think that there's been a different mix of businesses in that area from 20 or 30 years ago also.
Right.
I'm not disputing anything you say, but I think we should, we should take a.
It's worth looking at, definitely.
Looking at.
Or put up a toll gate, you know? That could work. Okay. There you go. There you go. All right. Ms. Madam Vice Chair, anything?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. President Biden signed into law yesterday $1.2 trillion on the U.S. Infrastructure Bill. That's to help build, rebuild roads and bridges and what have you. I was, my questioning is regarding if we've heard any word on how those dollars will be allocated to municipalities, especially us, the town of Stoughton. Is it going to be based on accessibility, based on need? Is it going to be based on some type of formula program, a funding formula? Does anyone have any updates from Congressman Lynch in that regard? I did want to state that I understand that there's been less ridership overall due to COVID, but what's the direct impact to the town of Stoughton? And who's looking after that and asking those questions?
Sue Herman is tasked with that. Obviously, this is literally just happening in the past week. So I spoke with Sue today, and she's going to be following up on availability to do municipalities accessing that. Is it direct to the municipalities? Is it going to go through the counties, as some of the ARPA money did? Is it going to come down through the Commonwealth? She will be navigating that path for us, and I will give you updates as we get them.
Thank you very much. That's very helpful, because some towns have a traffic commissioner, someone that's on staff that's doing that job, and I just wanted to ask my fellow board members and you, Dr. Grimm, who was looking after that. So thank you.
Sue will start, and then if we have to bring in experts in the specific fields related to those infrastructure projects, then we would turn toward Mark's Division of Development Services. But we first want to find out what it is that's available to us.
That's right.
And then go from there.
Well, it may be to our best interest to find out before they make the decision, so we can put our, our ducks in a row.
Absolutely.
And when I say ducks in a row, what I'm really referring to is a priority list.
Yes.
So we already have it in hand, so we can just hand it to them, if it's need-based, but we don't know what their formula is. And I'm finding this more and more.
And that's, that's going to be critical. I can tell you that we generally have areas that we know are priorities, that if funding was not an issue, we would move forward on quickly. Obviously, we have standard road paving, Chapter 90 money, but this is different. We're talking about major infrastructure projects, bridges, whatever. You know, Mark really has a good handle, Mark and Craig, on the projects in town that would be our top priorities. And I give you examples of what's going on with the tip money. For instance, the Skrull and Canton Street projects, intersection upgrades, things like that, that we have a general list of areas that we feel are important. And then, once we know what this formula is and exactly what Stoughton might receive, then we would bring those to you and say, "These are the priorities that we have, and here's the money available."
Thank you very much. Look forward to hearing an update. My second question is regarding the traffic flow on Walnut Street. We brought that up before, and, you know, we still have residents that are concerned. They, they go and they ask questions, and they're really not getting, you know, updates as, you know, trying to provide good customer service and just provide someone with an answer, like if not now, then when will that be addressed?
I, I will, I will talk to the police chief and Sergeant O'Connor. As you know, he's sort of double hats as our traffic officer and our detective, lead detective, and right now, unfortunately, he's been extraordinarily busy on the detective side with several issues. And so I will talk to him, and I'll see if they can assign somebody else to work with him to pick up that particular project on Walnut Street.
So short of staff, that's what I'm hearing.
It's not a shortage, it's just who specializes where, and we just, we may have somebody else who can assist him that we'll have to just pull in. We have people assigned to various divisions within the police department with various assignments. He happens to be the lead on that. Unfortunately, we've been particularly busy with other issues that have taken up a tremendous amount of time for him, maybe disproportionately so right now. So that was pushed a little off to the side, if you will. I hate to use that expression, but.
Right, right, right.
Just being honest. But we, I will talk to him, and we may have somebody else in there who can pick up that traffic weight for now and prioritize that project.
Could I jump in and say that I also sent a letter to you about three or four weeks ago on that same topic?
Yes.
And had a few suggestions of what you might follow up on.
Yes. And we will do that.
So when you, when you get yourself time, you can deal with that, too.
It's a, it's a busy time with special town meeting and budget, but we will find it, we will do it. Thank you very much.
I'm going to throw in a comment on that, where it's been something we've talked quite about, and I don't think it's much to ask, that the police department's starting tomorrow at sporadic times, I guess, on the, the morning commute and the afternoon commute, because since the set of lights went in at that intersection, it's been a whole different world.
Yes.
Because now they're watching, and they, they go through that intersection, in some cases, it's close to 40 to 50 miles an hour.
Okay.
And I think, starting tomorrow, we should have at least, you know, a half hour in the morning, half hour in the afternoon, and write some tickets, and let's, let's gauge the speeds that the police department is seeing, so that we, we have all our information. I don't think that's too much to ask for. I don't think, I think at all, it's not too much for the residents to get some action. And I've received only one phone call, but one phone call on something like that is all it takes. We serve the residents. Everybody here serves the residents, and with something like this that's been going on, I'd like to see something done on the enforcement end now, and, and then when they have time to look at that data, maybe they now put some signage up if need be. You know, it always works with, you know, controlled by radar, strictly enforced, and to send a message, you know? And if they don't get that message, we go out and, you know, remind them that the law is the law. Speeding is not warranted.
Text is sent.
So, great. Thank you.
I love technology. Sometimes technology's a good thing.
There you go. Mr. Kaby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I only have a couple of comments. I'll keep as, as brief as I can. I know we postponed the meeting slightly this more, this evening on my behalf, and so I'll try to respect everyone's time. Up until very recently, I've been working very hard to, to live more of a drama-free life as much as possible. I've gotten off of social media, I'm not watching the news quite as much, and life has gotten a lot better, I can say. Nevertheless, I, I have to sort of jump into an area that is a little more controversial and may, may cause some drama in the future, so we'll have to see. But this is related also to the, the warrant that we've received. I, I looked through this, and, you know, personally, I was, I was really shocked at some of the recommendations I was seeing, some, from some committees. I am not sitting here in judgment of the committees, but something in the system is, is not working. And we had, had a case, in this case, where of the articles that have been, that were looked at by the, by the committees, you know, I will put them on here because they stand out. The Finance Committee rejected almost two-thirds of the articles that were sent to them, just shy of two-thirds, either by voting it down or taking no action, in the case of the supplemental fiscal year 2022 budget, which was actually the, the main driver for having the special town meeting, with the note that, that they did not receive a funding source. Now, that, that might be, that may be true. I had to watch the meetings, I wasn't there, I'm not here to judge, but what I am seeing when I look at Article 8, is the very first sentence says that the funds are going to be coming from Treasury. And that, and the proposed motion, that the, the town voted to supplement. that the, uh, the, the town voted to supplement, will vote to supplement the 2022 budget, uh, by transferring money from various lines in the, in the budget to others, which sounds to me like there's a funding source there. Uh, the, the fact that, and the only things that passed were the feasibility study for the school, which was really a revote of something that is, there's, I think, just a mild change in some wording, uh, unpaid bills, which is like $4,000, and, uh, the Affordable Housing Trust, which is a program that has, already exists, and is just continuing to be funded by CPC. Everything else failed. And, um, uh, you know, as I said, I don't know what the problem is, but like this, we cannot operate as a, as a government with, with this. Uh, and this, if it continues like, if we have, if, if we continue like this, uh, we are going to be, um, sitting in politics. I mean, this, this is just our ability to function as, as a, as a collective group. Uh, you know, the things that went down, uh, you know, went down hard were the, the fire station, uh, a, a paper street, right? Just discontinuing a paper street, um, which is completely non-controversial, so far as I can tell. A trash packer, um, you know, so if people don't want to spend the money now, we can always come back in the, in the, the annual for that. Uh, supplementing our budgets and hiring a consultant, this would be from, from, I believe, CPC funds, to, uh, evaluate a barn on West Street. So it's, um, those all, those all failed. Um, and in these cases, actually, with the exception of the paper street, uh, none of those all, uh, failed with any other committees. Paper Street also failed with intergovernmental. Uh, as I said, I, I have a lot of respect for the work that FinCom does. Uh, I know many people members on that. Uh, I want to figure out what, what's going on here, and I've spoken with some of them to try to isolate what's going on. Um, but at this rate, if we see things like this in, in our annual coming up again, then, you know, I, I have real concerns about our ability to function as a government. Uh, if we, if every single thing that comes before our committees gets shut down, uh, then we're essentially done. We're done doing anything. And, uh, and I, I just hope that's not the case. Um, and I'm going to crawl back into my, into my hermitage, uh, and not listen to social media. Um, and I, I apologize if I've offended anybody here, uh, but I, I do not apologize for, for, uh, recognizing a really serious problem that has to be fixed now. And I take responsibility and accountability for being part of the solution to that. So, thank you very much.
I'm going to respond to that, uh, because I think I did touch a little while ago on what's happening here. And, um, when I spoke on the Veterans Day services, you know, this is an issue that's going on all over our country, in our state, in all in our towns. We're not alone. And social media does not serve publicly, local government, you know, municipal government well at all, because people are reading posts that, from somebody that has no clue what they're talking about, and they post on that. They weren't at a meeting. They didn't read the minutes, um, you know, and it just blows up. Uh, we've had that just recently, you know, with a, you know, with a committee, where they're in advisory capacity, vote the funding up or down. But, uh, in my opinion, there are several members that are trying to dictate policy by using this process to vote funds up or down, and it's not their responsibility. Uh, as Mr. Gito pointed out, you know, the Rules Committee has a, a specific aim, and it says "shall," and they chose not to. Uh, you know, it's not their role to go rogue, which other people have said before. Uh, and you know, there is a process. That process is owned by the taxpayers and the residents of Stoughton. And when people come in and want to go off in their own direction and try to influence issues that go before a town meeting, and in some cases with just false information, false or not correct, uh, or, you know, a different process that's never happened before, which has happened as well. Uh, it does not serve the residents of the town. And a lot of these things here, uh, I remember the one they said wasn't a su- a funding source. You read it. And I heard on their meeting, the town accountant tell them where the funding was coming from. I heard it with my own two ears. And anybody that follows these meetings and listens, you know, can just look up the meeting and, and follow along. All right? So, uh, there was another meeting where, you know, there was department heads there. All the questions were answered by all the, uh, the people at the committee, and, uh, the meeting closed, only for the committee to come back two days later, open up a whole new line of questioning without any department head there to answer the questions, even the incorrect ones, and the ones that were just, I don't know what fiction they were out of. Allegedly, something was going on that nobody could document, but it became a topic of discussion, and then the article was voted down. Uh, that's not what municipal government is. You base your decisions and your comments on the facts beforehand, availability of funds, the need for the community, and how it helps the taxpayer. Uh, a paper street is simple as making a piece of property tax-producing property. It's a piece of land that's useless to the town of Stoughton, and there's only one person it's worth, and the person wants to build. That was passed in 2015. All this was, was accepting, you know, the, the vote of the Norfolk County Commissioners to abandon that portion of the old road that's useless. I can't understand why that gets a vote down. That vote will ma- bring taxes into the town. So i- it's obvious that there are some members of some committees that have a whole different idea of what municipal government's all about. Um, and we'll just have to go to Town Meeting Floor and, uh, when it's appropriate, and, and take our, our conversation right to the Town Meeting Representatives. Because in some cases, it's not fair. I'm not going to point fingers at individuals, but what has happened is not a service to the taxpayers of this town. And if the taxpayers pay attention, they'd be sickened, in my opinion, by what they've seen. Sickened. And this isn't government the way it's supposed to work. You know, it's not we individually. It's for the people, by the people. That's, it's not somebody's agenda, you know, and we have too much of that. That's what's dividing this town. I've said it over and over, that, uh, the, the older timers that are, you know, that remember Margaret Fitzpatrick like I do, once told me, she said, let me give you these words of wisdom. Stoughton always has and always will eat its own. And the people, I love this town, my colleague to my left, Mr. Gito, we've definitely had some spirited conversations over the year, uh, years, you know? And I would never take away from Mr. Gito, his love for this town, nor would he do that to me. We just have sometimes a difference of opinion, but we can talk about it. I'm looking at another friend of mine in the audience, that, uh, we had quite the heated discussion, but we talked today. That's what it's all about. It's not about me. It's not about you. It's about the taxpayers of this town. And when people that serve on these committees realize their role and do their best interest for the people of Stoughton, we can do great things. But when we have to fight our own and listen to misinformation and personal agendas, we're not going to go anywhere. It's sad. It really is sad. So thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Kaby. And, um, you know, it's me saying what I said is going to ruffle some feathers, but I challenge them. Uh, don't talk about me. Don't talk about agendas, personalities. Talk about doing the job you're supposed to do for the taxpayers of this town. That's what this is all about. So I'm done. Thank you. Anybody else? Anything? Madam Town Manager, you don't want to, you don't want to agree?
I, I, no, I will chime in.
I can, I can see, I can see your face.
Because I was, I, it's Town Manager comment time, and I was not going to chime in, but I absolutely will.
Let's be gentle, though.
I will be gentle, but I will say this. Um, I have no personal relationship, nor have I, from the day I was hired in this town, with anybody in this town. Every action I take, every recommendation I make to a board, everything I put out publicly, every discussion I have privately, is in the best interest of the people of Stoughton. I have no ties to anybody except the taxpayer collectively. That I am appointed by you, I work five, for them. I will tell you, I have been threatened with everything up to criminal investigation because of this fire station project. I will not be backed off. Anybody can investigate what they want. Anybody can threaten me. Anybody can look through my cell phone and my emails. I have absolutely nothing to hide. What I will say is, on the heels of Mr. McCrisky's comment, I have full trust and respect for the Town Meeting members. It's a tremendous body. They have voted overwhelmingly to support this town moving forward. In the three years that I have been here, I have been very fortunate to have the trust and support of those members of Town Meeting, in addition to the boards to which I have served. I will take these, these projects to the floor of Town Meeting. I will share every bit of information. I've done two Zoom informational sessions. I have another one tomorrow for all Town Meeting articles that anybody has a question on. My door has been and will continue to be open to any member of this town who has questions or wants to have a spirited discussion. And we have people in the audience that know that I'm happy to engage in a spirited discussion. But I just want the message to be out there to the people who are listening and the Town Meeting reps. I will continue to present what I need to present that is in the best interest of the town of Stoughton, and threats, accusations, and innuendos about me will not back me off, and I will not tolerate that behavior toward my staff, because that's even worse. As a Town Manager, I know I'm up for hits. People want to come after me for whatever reason. I'm not an elected official, but for whatever reason, people like to come after you in this position. That's fine. Uh, but I will not have the reputation, the ethics and character of my staff, or their qualifications questioned the way they have been over the past few weeks, and not take it to the people of Town Meeting Floor, because I do trust Town Meeting reps to do the right thing for this town. So I appreciate you bringing it up. I wasn't going to say much, um, other than to remind people that I have an upcoming Zoom meeting, and anybody's welcome to, uh, attend, ask questions. Uh, and in addition, um, there were some questions on the financing, and we were going to bring Cindy McInerney, our, uh, expert on finance, our outside expert, our bond counsel in, uh, with Sue Herman. Uh, we were going to invite a couple of people on Finance Committee who had questions. There seemed to be some resistance to that, being open to just a few members of Finance Committee. So, uh, at 4 o'clock on tomorrow, out tonight, I'll be putting out, uh, tomorrow morning, I'll be putting out a Zoom link for any member of this town to listen and ask questions on the financing of this project to our outside consultant and expert. So anybody ask questions, please ask. And if you want to ask someone without me in the room, you are welcome to do that too, because there is no agenda, and my staff has nothing to hide. So I appreciate the time. And on that note, um, I, I do want to say I'm very excited, on a happy note, about what we have tonight, uh, coming up with the, the bylaw. Uh, it's been a tremendous effort by the Board, by the Planning Division, by Mark Tisdale, by the Planning Board, who is represented here tonight. This has been a collective project to move our downtown forward. This has been a personal goal of mine, a professional goal established by Boards for me, uh, to do this. And, uh, I think the night I interviewed, I talked to you passionately about my belief in walking downtown villages and the importance of downtown development, particularly in our, our New England communities, maintaining that, uh, beautiful tradition. So on a happy note, I am very excited, um, to hear what we have tonight. Uh, we have tremendous consultants who've worked extraordinarily hard with our team on this, and the public also. I want to thank the public for their participation in this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Town Manager. And, um, I won't share the name, but I will show you that, um, a Stoughton resident had just texted me and, uh, said, "Great discussion regarding the politics of Stoughton and all the personal agendas that have existed." Thanks. All right? So it, um, I thank him for that. Um, so we will move forward in doing what's right for all of the, the residents of the town of Stoughton. And as we move to our presentation, um, the team want to come up forward. And, um, I will thank members of the Planning Board, uh, that are here, Joe Scardino, Dan Kelly, Mark, and, um, John Charbonneau, for taking the time, uh, to meet with me as well on some of the things that, um, I had questions on and so forth. And the process that we had questioned in the past, um, I want to take my hat off to all of you for, uh, you know, the, and the many conversations I had with Dan Kelly, uh, you know, of him reaching out to me personally to, um, to kind of walk me through it and so forth. I don't know if I was a little slow, but I can be at times. And, um, but this is one of the times that you have to lean on the people that you know and you trust. And make question, but, um, you know, and Dan, thank you for, you know, your help on that. And, you know, the light smack in the heads. I can understand that, but, uh, yeah, very professional, and I do appreciate that. So John, with that, again, thank you for that meeting we had. Um, it was very productive. And, um-
Very appreciate that.
-thank you for setting all that up.
Thank you. So I apologize if parts of this presentation have been heard before previous updates. Um, this is a comprehensive, I'll try and keep it quick. It's a comprehensive background, uh, leading up to the, uh, the final bylaw. Um, as the Board is aware, this started way back in December of 2019 at a special town meeting, where the Town Meeting voted to appropriate $50,000 to hire a consultant to assist the town in the rezoning effort for the downtown. Next side, please, Deb. Thank you. Um, Horst Lee Witten, represented by Jeff Davis to my left, was hired, was elected, uh, chosen unanimously and hired as of February of 2020. Now, um, naturally, that was right around the time that the COVID pandemic started and all the restrictions, so it was a little bit bumpy getting started. Um, but updates were provided by the, by myself at the October 2020 Special Town Meeting and the May 2021 Annual Town Meeting. So in March of 2020, a working group was appointed consisting of myself, the Town Engineer, the Assistant Town Engineer, the Economic Development Director, the Building Commissioner, and the Assistant Sanitarian. We were all appointed to work with the consultant initially to get this off the ground. Um, we met with the consultant for the first time on May 14th, 2020, again, which took a little bit of time, because I think it was late February of 2020 when all the restrictions went in place, as, as far as town hall hours and Boards and staff alike were scrambling to adjust to, um, new restrictions. But this working group provided comments on the resident survey and draft regulations along the way. Um, the first task was to, um, develop a survey for residents that was worked on and made available to the public from August to September 2020. And especially considering the fact that this was done online only, 800 responses was a tremendous response from the residents. Um, and this served as the basis for the draft regulations. So the working group, the Downtown Task Force and the Planning Board, worked on a draft bylaw beginning in October of 2020. Um, the Downtown Task Force has provided comments during the development of the resident survey and the regulations, and a total of actually now 13 discussions have been held, at which the public was able to participate and ask questions or make comments. In addition, the Planning Board has also provided comments during the development of the survey and the bylaw. A total of 22 discussions have been held to date, at which the public was able to participate and ask questions or make comments. Now, some of these agendas were simply updates provided to the Board in terms of progress on the bylaw that was being made. However, there were also several lengthy discussions on the bylaw. Uh, updated presentations were given to the Select Board at the meetings of June 16th, 2020, October 6th, 2020, March 16th, 2021, and tonight's final presentation. In addition, the, the SRA held discussions at their meetings on March 9th, 2020, March 12th, 2020, and June 15th, 2020. In February of 2021, a sit-walk was held with the consultants. I was in attendance, as well as a couple members of the Planning Board, the Redevelopment Authority, and the Downtown Redevelopment Task Force. And public forums were held virtually on June 7th and September 13th of this year. Throughout the process, a summary of survey results, the draft regulations, the presentations given by the consultants, and a summary of the differences between the existing regulations and proposed regulations have been posted on the Planning Board's webpage in their own folder. Residents have been encouraged to contact myself with any questions or comments throughout this process. I made it clear that I have an open-door policy, and that anyone is welcome to call or come to see me about these regulations with any questions. So now we get into the bylaw itself. Um, why hasn't the Schmood been effective to date? And there are a, a couple, a few different reasons for this. Um, one that stood out pretty quickly when I first started reviewing the bylaws is that there are four underlying zoning districts: residential, urban, general business, CBD, and industrial. And each of the underlying districts has its own set of regulations. Um, now, typically, an overlay district is meant to be more flexible, uh, for development. However, there are some instances in this bylaw where, um, the overlay district is actually stricter than the underlying district regulations. Um, and overlay district regulations add complexity for developers in trying to navigate which regulations apply to their projects, or which ones they want to apply under. Um, when regulations are too complex and restrictive, developers tend to stay away. They want predictability they want in their process. Um, they don't want to come forward with a project based on the promise of a special permit or waiver. That's too risky for them in most cases. Um, another thing I've heard from the private sector is that the minimum parking requirements are too onerous and discourage development, especially on smaller lots in the Schmood. So how does this bylaw before you improve these things? First of all, the proposed Stoughton Center District is one comprehensive district with three sub-districts. The core in orange, and, uh, we did create this map, um, specifically because we do realize that there are some members of the public who may be, um, colorblind and not be able to differentiate between colors, so we added some patterns in there to be able to differentiate between the districts a little bit easier. So in the core, or the orange district, the taller buildings, more density limits on residential to upper floors are all part of that. As you move out from the core to the flex, this is where moderate height and density is allowed, more uses and residential uses are allowed on all floors. And then the transition districts, which are out closer to the- And then the transition districts, which are out closer to the residential neighborhoods, shorter buildings are allowed, less density and limited, very limited commercial uses. Now, the sub-districts were purposely created with a lot of thought with regulations that are sensitive to the areas that they are near and to protect surrounding neighborhoods. Next slide, please. So, obviously, we start with the dimensional regulations. What we were tasked with at the beginning, what we heard from the private sector, is that although towns hope that developers will work together and combine lots to construct projects that very rarely, if ever, happens in reality. So, what we were asked to do is provide more flexibility for developers to be able to develop the lots that they own currently and not be expected to combine lots, because that's very tricky. So, the proposed minimum lot sizes drastically reduce the number of non-conforming lots in the Stoughton Center District and provide flexibility for development. I believe there was an analysis done by our GIS person, Larry Langloy, at the beginning of the process, and I believe currently we had something along the line of 74, 75 non-conforming lots in the Stoughton Center District.
It was a high percentage.
It was very high. The dimensional regulations you see before you would reduce that number to approximately 15 non-conforming lots, which it's impossible to avoid non-conforming lots altogether, but obviously, it's a lot better, the less non-conforming lots you have. The minimum lot sizes, setbacks, building heights, lot coverage, and open space are all graduated from the core out to the periphery, while promoting less intense development in the flex and transition to complement the core sub-district and buffer the surrounding neighborhoods. The bylaw also allows various uses the town wants to encourage by right. Now, I want to make this clear to people. Something that's allowed by right does not mean there's not a public hearing process. There would be a public hearing process, it just wouldn't be a special permit. So, they would be publicly advertised, the public would be notified, and they would have an opportunity to comment on these projects. The tables to the right illustrate the differences between the proposed dimensions and what exists Next slide, please. Now, obviously, one important aspect of this is, you know, it's easy to look at a spreadsheet and look at numbers, but what will this look like on the ground? Now, what you see in the renderings before you is an example of how the dimensional regulations would appear on the ground. Now, there was discussion at the beginning of the process about how sophisticated these renderings would be. There were a couple of reasons why we kept the renderings fairly basic. One reason was cost prohibitive. In order to do a really sophisticated color renderings and really, you know, dig into it, it would have cost a lot of money, and it would have blown through the budget, to be honest. The second reason is, we didn't want to hyper-focus on one property and have residents and the Boards focused on one property. We wanted this to be an illustration, because the fact is that, you know, what type of building could go in depends on a lot of different factors, including the uses, the height, the size of it, what the developer proposes in terms of the appearance on the building. So, this provides a basic illustration and does not take into account specific design elements that could be incorporated, such as facade treatment or other architectural Next slide, please. Thank you. So, we do have a provision where the addition of a fifth story in the core sub-district is permitted by special permit by the Planning Board. It's not a by-right allowance to go to a fifth story in the core. The developer will also, in turn, be required to provide the town with a community benefit in exchange, which is explained in the bylaw. The potential community benefits could be provision of public parking, enhanced front yard, affordable housing, or other public improvements, such as improvements to pedestrian circulation, landscaping, or parks, or the relocation of utility poles to be underground. In addition, the fifth story will have to be designed to be stepped back at least 10 feet from the frontages, as shown at the renderings, and this was a comment we received from Mr. Gito, that there should be a rendering showing example of a corner lot, which is shown at the bottom right there, as far as what a step-back fifth story would look like. Next slide, please. Thank you. The design standards that currently exist for the town center have been incorporated into this bylaw by reference. There was discussion about actually incorporating them word for word. However, we really didn't, first of all, didn't want this bylaw to be 25, 27 pages. But secondly, we have design standards in place, we simply needed to reference them. So, Section 9.313 accomplishes that. Parking, next slide, please. So, parking was a hotly debated topic along the way. Minimum parking requirements have been a hindrance to development in downtown. With the survey that was conducted, residents supported the idea of allowing flexibility with regard to parking, with 71% of respondents expressing support for either the elimination of minimum parking requirements in the core sub-district and allowing property owners to solve the issue with creative solutions on a case-by-case basis. Now, this was discussed, and there was, you know, there's a balance between, you know, easing up on parking requirements, but at the same time, not going too crazy and creating a problem. So, the minimum parking requirements in the core have been eliminated for commercial developments and have been reduced to a half a space per housing unit for residential developments. There was a downtown parking analysis conducted in 2018 that indicated that there is ample parking supply in the town center, but it's currently being underutilized. Next slide, please. And this chart on this slide is a sample or comes from that study. The chart shows that public parking in the downtown is, in fact, underutilized. So, there are going to be different things that come out of this bylaw once it's adopted. One discussion that's happened is senior housing, a senior housing bylaw for, you know, for the entire town. Another one is parking, parking management study, also signage to make motorists aware of municipal parking and public parking areas in the downtown. So, recommended action items could include increased or improved parking signage and investment in improved pedestrian circulation and safety. Not only are these possible opportunities that we could take care of through grants through the regional planning agencies, but these are possible community benefits for a developer to add a fifth story in the core. That could be something that a developer is asked to do, is to provide signage for motorists to be aware of where public parking is located. Next slide, please. Thank you. Signage. We had to take a look at signage, because the current downtown regulations do not contain a general signage bylaw that applies to the entire area. The regulations apply to each underlying zone and district. Since the underlying districts are being removed in favor of the Stoughton Center District and the sub-districts, there is a need to establish sign and regulations for the new Stoughton Center District. So, this bylaw allows pre-existing non-conforming signs to remain, but any alteration to any such sign will need to conform with the newly established regulations contained in this bylaw. And as is the case now, any deviation from the signed regulations will require a special permit from the Planning Board. This is a slide that I added in within the last few days, because I thought this was an important issue to bring forward, because this is one of the main complaints that I heard about the Schmood, is how the utilization of the first story in the core sub-district and in the CBD is handled. So, this is what is in the bylaws. It clearly defines how the first story of these buildings should be utilized. In the core sub-district, the entire linear frontage of the ground floor of a building must be utilized for retail or another allowed non-residential use, with the exception of access to parking. In the case of a corner lot, 100%, again, of the primary linear frontage of the building would need to be utilized for retail or other allowed non-residential use, and a portion of the secondary linear frontage of the building would need to be utilized for retail or other allowed non-residential use at the discretion of the SPGA. So, in the example of a building that, say, is on the corner of Washington and Wyman Street, the primary frontage would be along Washington Street, and the secondary frontage would be along Wyman Street. And the secondary frontage may also be utilized for access to parking. So, this clearly delineates how the first floor of buildings should be utilized. Now, something that was also important to the Planning Board and the Task Force is that, in the flex sub-district, for projects that possess contiguous lots and are in common ownership that contain a minimum of 100 housing units, a minimum of 25% of the primary linear frontage of the ground floor of a building must be utilized for retail or another allowed non-residential use, and the allocation of that space will be determined by the SPGA. So, this is, for instance, is where a large housing development is proposed, so there is, so there will be a non-residential retail commercial component to it, to serve that neighborhood where the building is located. And it's important to give the Special Permit Granting Authority some flexibility to design or work with the developer on the location of that space, because, you know, that will partially depend on how the building is oriented on the lot, with, you know, in relation to the train tracks and the roadway. So, we decided that it was important to have some flexibility there to allow some options. So, in summary, the major goal of creating this bylaw is to provide increased flexibility for developers and the town to work together to construct the type of development the town wants in the downtown with a design that maintains the town character. Flexibility is the main word I keep going to, and it's not just for the town, it's not just for the private sector, it's for both the town and the developer, because I've had experiences in other communities where, when bylaws are ultra-specific and too specific, unintended loopholes are created. So, that flexibility is important for both developers and the town to be able to work together. Another goal is to provide consistency in the regulations to encourage development and provide a simpler permitting path for developers. And everyone who's worked on this bylaw believes that these goals have been accomplished with the bylaw that's being presented to the town for approval that's in front of the Select Board tonight. One thing I would really appreciate people to understand is that there's no such thing as a perfect bylaw. Towns and their zoning bylaws are always constantly trying to play catch-up with what's happening in the private sector, and it's almost an impossible task, but towns do the best they can. That's where the flexibility is important. And yes, it's likely that this bylaw will need to be tweaked in the coming years, depending on different factors. For example, coming out of COVID, the need for professional office space may change as a result. Also, parking demands, as a result, may decrease as a result of people working more from home. These are things that nobody has a crystal ball today to know how things are going to develop over the next two, three years. So, you know, we took a look at the bylaws that exist, exist right now, and from my professional opinion, I can say that what is presented before you provides flexibility and is much more desirable and flexible than what the town has in their zoning bylaws right now. The Planning Board voted to approve the proposed bylaw at a public hearing that began on October 14 and was concluded on November 9 last week. They voted unanimously to recommend this bylaw for approval. And the Planning Board respectfully requests that tonight, the Select Board vote to also endorse this bylaw and refer it back to the Planning Board for a public hearing in January to meet the requirements of Mass. General Law, that a public hearing be held within 65 days of referral to the Planning Board by the Select Board. And that's all I have for tonight. So, that's the, that's the bylaw that's before you, and that's the request that the Planning Board respectfully requests of the Select Board tonight.
Thank you, Mark. John, they're looking at Mark's head there, and, no, thank you for that. So, questions? Mr. Cabe?
Yeah, I have a few. I want to make sure that I'm sort of putting some pieces together, and this is based on some meetings we've had over a series of several months. So, I want to make sure I'm not addressing something that is not actually what you're presenting. Not too long ago, when we were, when we opened up the warrant for the Special Town Meeting, there was a request for zoning changes at that point. Are these the same zoning changes?
Yes.
Okay. I appreciate that. So, one of the, since that meeting, have there been any changes to this?
Yeah, there actually have been some tweaks. Yeah, there have been, there have been a few tweaks made to this. The slide that I presented on the, on the definition of how first floor shall be handled in the core and flex, that was, that was a significant thing that was addressed since then. That was probably the most major thing.
It's the most significant.
Yeah, that's the most significant change that's been made since then. Yeah, it was, it was determined that this bylaw needed a little bit more outreach and a little bit more review before it was ready to go before Town Meeting, so that's why it got pulled from the Special Town Meeting. It was close, but it wasn't, it wasn't quite ready.
And if I might interrupt on that, there's a lot of discussion on that parking access question.
Yeah.
And on lots that are not corner lots, if they, we don't want parking in front of the buildings, and if we wanted parking behind the buildings, from a business standpoint, it's very hard for people to drive down side streets and cut through the back to park. It also puts weird traffic patterns on side streets. So, what this does is it allows almost like an archway, if you will, where someone might have a cut through, they lose a little bit of storefront space in the front, but they get a little bit of access. We put a percentage limitation on how much could be used. But it really makes it easier for the customers to access those businesses, and it takes weird traffic patterns where people are driving. If you go into towns where you have to do all the parking behind the building, they're very awkward towns to get around. And, but again, this would be done carefully, and why site plan is so important on all this is, what you wouldn't want is two of those, let's say, one, one building puts it on one end of the lot, the other building puts their little access on the same set, and you have curb cuts, you know, turning into each other. So, that's where site plan would still be important.
And I'd like, I'd like to add to that, because Robyn brings up a great point, and one of the, one of the points of discussion is, we also didn't want to overburden the secondary road in that case, in the example I brought up, say, Wyman Street. We didn't want to overburn Wyman Street with the appearance of entirely parking on that side of the building either, so we were sensitive to that as well. We didn't want to say, "Okay, well, Washington Street's going to look nice, but Wyman Street? Ah." So, that was why we spent so much time talking about exactly how we wanted to handle this, because we didn't, we wanted to make sure that from both sides of a corner lot in that example, that the building maintained a really nice town character appearance.
Yeah. I generally am somewhat cavalier about zoning changes. I think we need a lot of them, so I'm typically, you know, in support of them. But regardless of my own feelings, I know that, to be honest, and I'll just be perfectly frank, when we bring these things to Town Meeting, they, they often go down in flames. And, and what I've found to be the case most commonly, and this is just my own observation, perhaps I'm wrong, but Town Meeting delegates the authority of zoning to, essentially, the Select Board, right, through us, right, because we appoint the, the Planning Board. And so, it's a very diffused power. It's something that they have delegated to the Select Board to then appoint people for a very long period of time. And they've really, ultimately, Town Meeting ends up with, with only one bite of the apple whenever there's a zoning question. It's, and they say either yes or no on that. They otherwise have very little input, other than public hearings. And so, one of the things I've, I've noticed somewhat acronically, is that, that if you bring very clear changes to them, they'll, they'll vote how they feel. If you put in a lot of special permits where they're, where you're sort of telling them one thing, but it turns out, you know, you're just going to have to trust you that you're going to only use those wisely, that has been a recipe for disaster in the time that I've been paying attention. And when we heard this a couple of months ago, that was one of, similar, sort of similar to one of the comments, I think I might have been a little bit less direct about it, but I think it's, now I've got to be more direct about it, and say that, that, though I, I'm, I may vote for this, when this gets to Town Meeting, the, having a lot of special permits where people who have almost no reach from Town Meeting itself, they cannot, they cannot decide to get rid of people from, from the Planning Board, they can't overwrite any of their decisions. Essentially, you give them the keys to the castle, and you just trust them to do it. I don't think we have the kind of government that has that level of trust in such a remote arm of, of its, of its control.
Steve, that's a great point, and I actually just flipped to the use table on pages four through six. And if you flip through the use table, you'll know that, you'll see that there's very, there's many less special permits required in this bylaw. There's not a lot. You'll see a lot, you'll see a lot more whys, yeses, which really, not many exist right now in our current bylaw of the Schmood.
Yeah.
Basically, anything you want to do is special permit and site plan review, so it's a dual approval. So, yeah, you're absolutely right, Steve, and that was a, that was, that was a lengthy conversation at the beginning of this.
Yeah, so we have reduced the number of uses that require a special permit significantly. The one big thing that does still require a special permit is that fifth story, and we felt very strongly that because that is, you know, an instance that, you know, it's not going to be appropriate everywhere, it may only be a handful of sites that are appropriate, that it was important to keep that special permit process for that in particular. But otherwise, the goal was to reduce the number of special permits.
And I think to John's point earlier, just because it doesn't require special use doesn't mean that it doesn't necessarily have a public hearing, to your point, that the public does want to have input on this. So, even if there's no special use, and I agree, special use becomes that political question of who's who, who gets it, and not that it is that way, but that's the perception that can happen. But by putting more by-right uses in, it stops that or reduces that tremendously, but it does not take away uses in, it stops that or reduces that tremendously, but it does not take away still the chance for the public to at least be heard on these projects.
And also, keep in mind that with the amount of small lots in the Stoneton Center District, that the size of the lot will almost, they'll be self-regulating. In other words, it's not going to make sense to put, to Robin's point, to put a five-story building on a 3,000-square-foot lot unless you're doing a space needle. But that's not going to happen. So there is an amount of self-regulation that occurs with the size of the lots.
I appreciate that. The special permit related to the five stories, I'll be frank with you, as small as that might seem, I think that might kill this at town meeting, something as simple as that. But I don't have any further questions. I will just share that I do have a concern.
Like I said, the survey results served as the basis for this, and there was quite a bit of support for adding that extra story in the Core Sub-District.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Roberts?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Charvino and team. My questioning is coming from a different direction. So I can understand completely, because we've had more than one conversation about the developers and making sure zoning is more flexible to encourage businesses. So my question, two questions, is coming from the perspective of a resident. So the question is, are there any of the residential housings, like assisted or subsidized, going to be restricted in this new zoning bylaw change? So specifically HUD-sponsored housing, is it going to be restricted? Over-65 retirement housing, is it going to be market rate restrictions or subsidized? So define the type of housing that will be allowed on the site. And I want to kind of bring that home by saying, are you trying to encourage residential residences in the downtown area, or are you more interested in commercial benefits of this project?
Both. The answer is both. We're trying to strike a balance, and that's not an easy thing to do, because at some point, we don't know where that tipping point is, but there is a tipping point of having too much residential in your downtown. That's why we emphasize residential more in the flex and transition to support development in the Core. However, having gone through this process in the past when I was in the town of Rantham, the owner of the property that was being rezoned told us point-blank, if we do a mixed-use development, we're building the residential first, because we need to know that their residential support is there for the commercial and retail that we're going to put in. So they, in no uncertain terms, told us, when we get approved for a mixed-use development, the residential's going in first, because we need to have that foot traffic, that support for the commercial. But you're absolutely right. We looked into the possibility. Now, you'll notice that in the flex and transition, we maintained the requirement for 10% affordable housing with any housing development over 10 units. We bumped that up from five. So with any project over 10 units, they have to provide at least 10% affordable units. In the Core, you're right, we didn't want to overburden the developers, but it is a density bonus as part of going up to a fifth story if a developer wishes to. One of the community benefits is to provide a minimum of 10% affordable housing. Now, we did talk about the potential of restricting that to senior housing. However, when I got a legal opinion from town council, was told that you can't really do that. It has to be open to families. It has to be open to everybody. But that's why I say, coming out of this, once this major task is accomplished, one of my next priorities is to start work on a senior housing bylaw for the town, because I think the town desperately needs it. So, yeah, that absolutely did come up, and we were told that we had to, you know, we had to be pretty general with our housing.
Which is not to say that senior housing would be precluded. You can absolutely build affordable housing, you can build senior housing, you can build assisted living. So I don't think there's any restriction, with the exception of, we're not going to allow single-family houses in the Core, because there's just too much potential there that you wouldn't want to waste it on, you know, one family house. But other than that, there's nothing that precludes these types of housing, just does not require them.
And I'd like just to give you a quick example, Debra, of, you know, why it's important to have flexibility, because developers, private developers, are working with materials that are more cost-effective and are able to give the town the appearance of what they want. For instance, in the town of Walpole, they had a couple developments go in there in the town center, and they wanted limestone. However, there are downfalls to limestone. Not only is it expensive, but it bleeds over time, and it doesn't look nice. So the developers of those projects were working with concrete but giving it the appearance of limestone. So there's a win-win for both the developer and the town, because the town gets the appearance it wants, but it gets a more sturdy development that's going to withstand the test of time and look better over the course of time. And I know the town of Framingham, when Shopper's World went in, this shopping development between Route 30 and Route 9, the town tried to really be ultra-restrictive with its definition of window signs. So it created a definition that a window sign is any sign that's affixed to the inside of the glass. So what did the businesses do? They put in drop ceilings, and they put a hook and a chain and hung the sign this far inside the window. That's my example when I try and emphasize the importance of flexibility. If you become too restrictive, you create loopholes you never intended. So it's important to allow, you know, that's saying, give peace a chance. Give developers a chance to come with something creative that will work for the town and the developer alike, and you can get a situation that works for both.
Thank you. That was very descriptive. My second question is, what types of businesses are allowed in the mixed-use area? So, for example, barber shop and a pharmaceutical and a tattoo parlor with a foundry. So in my elementary way of thinking about zoning and the way businesses are kind of paired together, you wouldn't have a foundry on the first floor and a residential house on the top. So is there anything within these new zoning bylaws that talk to that about the mixed use? So under commercial, are there any restrictions on what type of businesses are allowed in this particular mixed-use area?
So the only real restriction that we have written in is that production or industrial uses cannot be in the same building as a residential use, with the exception of, I believe, artisanal crafts and food and beverage. So, for example, you could have theoretically a brew pub on the ground floor with residences above. But otherwise, industrial and residential is a no-no. But beyond that, we are trying to leave mixed use as flexible as possible. And so whatever uses are allowed within that underlying sub-district can be mixed in a single building, as written.
And typically, I think the market and the private developers drive that. They know who their residents are going to be, who they're targeting. They know the type of retail store they're looking at down below. If that first floor is sort of designed for a restaurant, they know that the type of people who'll be living above it will be okay with that. Developers tend not to set things up. Now, they don't necessarily know who the tenants are going to be for some of the smaller retail. Will it be a tattoo parlor? Will it not? But generally, developers have a sense, they're not going to, and even property owners, are not going to put businesses in that are going to drive their residents out and leave vacant apartments. So the private sector almost governs itself on that.
And it's interesting, Debra, because again, going through the process in Rantham, the town of Rantham had done a charrette, a public charrette, back in 2012, where the residents wanted to see a supermarket on that property where the old Tyco Crosby valve property used to be. And as soon as we sat down with that developer and we said, well, the town wants a supermarket, he started shaking his head. He said, a supermarket's not going to go there. And we asked why. He said, well, first of all, you're surrounded by supermarkets, Big Y in Franklin, the Stop &amp; Shop in Plainville, you've got the Market Basket in Bellingham, you're surrounded by supermarkets. Secondly, the location is not visible enough. So this bylaw was developed in conjunction between the town and also the downtown task force, has two private sector individuals on it, in Anthony Rosseto and Tabor Keely from Donahue Commercial Real Estate. Tabor was the one who recommended the step-back of the fifth story. So this was a public-private partnership in a way in developing this bylaw. So Robin's absolutely right. The market is going to drive what can go into a space.
Thank you very much. What's somewhat driving my questions on another note is because for our public hearings, for our pass-through license, we're seeing a lot, well, a lot more than I've seen in my limited time, a lot of car dealerships or repair, auto repair, applying for licensing and things like that.
I don't believe that's an allowed use in this downtown. If you look at the use table, that's not allowed. So there was, yeah. No, that's not allowed. There were certain uses that were discussed that would not belong in this town center. I don't believe they're allowed currently.
No, I don't think so.
No, so they remain that way.
Oh, so that remains. Thank you very much.
Mr. Gito?
You've come a long way from the first iteration, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I also appreciate the colorblind issue. I...
I wish we had thought of that sooner, but I'm glad we did think of that.
And the corner lot issue. I wouldn't have thought about the next point that I'm going to raise if we hadn't had the next people who are coming up here come before us a couple of weeks ago. And that is the issue of the Central Business District as being the only district that will be completely eliminated from the zoning bylaw. One of the consequences of that is that the Central Business District is still referenced in other parts of the zoning bylaw.
Can I address that quickly, Lou?
You may.
Part of a packet that I submitted to the board is a listing. I went through the entire zoning bylaw and did a red-strike-through of every reference to the Central Business District. I made a copy of that page, so the board does have that. So I thought about that, and that was something that came up. So that has been done, Lou, and will be presented as part of this article. So thank you for bringing that up. So, yeah, I just wanted to assure you that that's been taken care of.
Well, it has been taken care of, aside from the fact that it needs to be addressed when you bring the bylaw forward, because if you don't address those issues, then you will have created other issues that make the bylaw nonsensical.
Absolutely.
And so how are you going to do that?
I mean, do exactly how John just described. So this will all be presented as a single package, not just the zoning, but the amendments that John provided, the strike-through will all be passed, would all be passed as a package.
And the same with the changes to the zoning map. So the article will be written in such a way that it'll be the deletion of the existing 9.3, section 9.3, and the insertion of this one, plus the removal of any reference to the Central Business District in the zoning bylaws and the relevant changes to the zoning map.
Yes. So you will change the language on those other pages as well?
Yes.
So your zoning article will not be 30 pages long or 20 pages long, as it looks like now, but maybe 50 or something like that?
No, it's not going to be any longer.
It's not going to be any longer. Then how are you going to do that, would you say?
Because the strike-throughs of the Central Business District references aren't going into this bylaw.
They're not going to the bylaw, they're being, right.
Right, they're being removed.
How are they going to be removed? I guess that's really what I'm asking.
By deleting them. And it would be basically, it's basically a housekeeping item, just removing them from the existing zoning bylaws. So, for instance, in section 2, page 3 of the zoning bylaws, the Central Business District in the division into districts in the naming of the districts, Central Business District will be removed and Stoneton Center District will be put in its place. And then in the use table, the entire column of Central Business District is going to be taken out, because there's a table inside of this zoning amendment that will have the allowed uses within the three sub-districts.
Right. So I guess to your point, the warrant will be more than the 20 pages, but the...
But the actual bylaw won't be. Yeah, this will be, the article will be simple. It'll be a handout to people at town meeting, illustrating to them what will be removed.
I'm sorry I'm fixated on this, but when you end up, at the end of the day, something is going to be published. And that thing that's published should be what the zoning bylaw is, so that when people look at the zoning bylaw, they would be looking at what they can do and what they can't do, not another page that says, oh, on page 6, there's a reference to this, but what?
Well, at one...
I don't care who answers the question.
So I guess what the whole idea of this is, we've put together a zoning bylaw that's part of our main bylaw. It's not a separate bylaw. It's actually an insert, it's part of our main bylaw. So we're changing, taking out the Stoneton Center Business District and adding in this district.
I understand that.
No, no, no. When you do that, you remove that whole of the districts, so all the other, the rest of the zoning bylaw will be edited as part of this change. So when the zoning bylaw gets rewritten, this part gets inserted, the SCD district disappears.
Oh, no, Central Business District.
The Central Business District disappears, I'm sorry. It disappears from the new zoning bylaw when it comes up. And that's the change that gets made, is part of the rewriting of the zoning, because we're not rewriting the entire zoning code, we're just inserting a section. But to insert that section, you have to remove what you're taking up. And because it's referenced so many places in the zoning code, that's the only way you can do it, is you have to delete it.
So you'd be voting on not just the 20 pages, the insert of the new Stoneton Center District, you would also be voting to approve these amendments and the maps. So the rest of the zoning would no longer reference back erroneously to the Central Business District, because all that would be removed.
Just for a specific example, I don't want to spend an awful lot of time on this, but at the same time, if we're going to move ahead, I need to know what it is that really is going to happen. Here on page 29 of the current zoning bylaw, in section 6, general regulations, is a table of off-street parking regulations that references the Central Business District.
Correct.
And do those words get taken out?
Yes.
And does someone see that? Or do they see on page 26 of the current bylaw, these items are going to be stricken? And then they get stricken and written?
No, they're going to be removed from the overall zoning bylaw, because the parking regulations that are going to apply to the Stoneton Center District are in the bylaw that's being inserted.
Yes. But the off-street parking regulations relate to a whole lot of other areas as well.
Right, but those aren't being changed, just the reference to the Central Business District.
That will not, that won't be there at all?
Nope. They won't be touched. Just the reference to the Central Business District who were removed.
Right. So once the edits are made, it will be clean, and there will no longer be any, so someone who comes and, you know, looks up the zoning bylaw will only see, they won't see the old text.
Yeah, they're not going to see strike-throughs once the bylaw is republished.
But you will publish something that has all the pieces that need to be...
Absolutely. This will be handed out to town meeting as it was to the board tonight.
Maybe you could send me a copy of that at some point.
It was in the packets, Lou. That was submitted to you. The new bylaw, the removal of the Central Business District, and also the zoning map as revised, were all part of what was...
I didn't get any of that.
I...
Well, that explains it.
Yeah, I...
I mean, I appreciate...
I apologize, Lou. Let me explain. Before the November 2 meeting, I had given physical packets that didn't go to the board because we got delayed. And I, okay, so they didn't get distributed to the board before tonight's meeting.
Would it be possible for us to see that before we vote?
They're actually, they're actually near Deb's desk.
No, but I mean, I'm not expecting to go through that this evening, but... No, but I mean, I'm, I'm not expecting to, to go through that this evening, but I mean, I, I have, it seems that we should at least look at that information.
Lou, their intention was that you would have these before tonight's meeting, I didn't realize.
Look, I, I believe that you had wonderful intentions. I believe that everybody had wonderful intentions. But we have responsibility also...
I know.
...to make a decision based on all the information that is available, and it's not all available yet.
Lou, you were supposed to have it before tonight, I apologize.
No, I, look, again, I'm not, I'm not, I am not casting blame. I am not saying that you've done something wrong. I'm just saying that we need to see information.
Yes.
Thank you for, thank you for looking at that.
Mm-hmm.
I would like to see it.
Yep. I will get those packets out to you tomorrow. I will personally deliver them to your houses tomorrow, I promise. Yes, I will get those and I will deliver them to your homes tomorrow.
If we were to look at that information and vote, not tonight, but a week from now, your life probably isn't going to change an awful lot. I mean, I, I don't think you should expect that we would vote if we don't have the packets.
No, not if you don't have the packets, no.
Thank you.
Well, let's see, with the way things have been stacking up, we may be meeting earlier than expected because we've got to get things done. And we do a very poor job of keeping our schedule here. I'm trying to let everybody talk, but it just goes way beyond, so we're definitely going to have to make up some meetings. So I'll talk with the town manager, maybe what we talked about earlier tonight, there might be, now we can bring the two issues together. And in some cases, if it's only two issues, we can do them remotely, if it's just those, and, and try to get accurate on them, so. Yeah, no, I don't either, but whatever works fastest, I mean, it's, in some cases, you come all the way up here, if you're going to be in and out in a half hours, if you can do it, you know, remotely, it's, well, well, I guess, you know, what I'm going to start doing is putting like one or two items on the agenda because they seem to take longer than, you know, because we're already basically an hour behind.
Joe, I, I think that the questions that I asked are relevant, okay?
No, I'm not saying that, Lou, I'm not saying they're all good questions.
And I think that the others are as well.
But every time we set an agenda, it takes much longer than we appropriate, so what I'm going to start doing is just giving it more time, and if anything, we'll be getting out earlier if we stay ahead, so.
Mr. Chair. This, this, I do have a question that I just, I think I might have a remedy for us. This would be, your question is that we submit this to the planning board...
Refer this to the planning board for public hearing.
So they can do the, the public hearings.
Because I will need to advertise that for January 13th.
Yeah, so that, that is from Section, sorry, Chapter 48, Section 5, correct? And this came up the last time we spoke, where in this case, the board's selectmen or city council shall within 14 days of receipt of such zoning ordinances or bylaws, submit it to the planning board for review. So we did have a discussion about shall earlier today. This is actually mostly outside of, out of our hands. As soon as it's, it's, we receive it, we have 14 days to, to act on it.
Yep, so if you can, if you want to do that next week, you have time to do that.
Yeah, so the possibility is we could, we could either, I mean, I'm not asking anybody to, to vote before they have actually received it, but once we've received it, we have an obligation to forward it anyway. So it can, we can make it a very quick meeting, maybe at, we'll do it, we'll do it at 6:30 in the morning, and...
We'll be out by noon.
I will, I will have those packets delivered to your homes tomorrow morning.
You certainly can if it's a, basically a formality of forwarding it to planning. If you had those packets tomorrow on a Wednesday, you could, let's say, advertise it on a Monday morning to simply take the vote to forward or not to forward. And that could be separated apart. That other meeting we're talking about is literally a 15-minute remote meeting possibly. They don't want to do it until December 2nd or November 30th anyway, that might be late on this timeframe. The other thing I would ask you to consider, and we don't have to make a decision tonight, this can be made either on that November 30th or December 7th, is whether or not the board wants to consider a special town meeting just for this article, as we had sort of tossed out there as a possibility, a one-night town meeting. Obviously, if somebody petitions articles, we can't stop petitioned articles, but the spirit of it would be one article sometime in probably mid-to, mid-February timeframe. We could pull a warrant together very quickly, print it in-house. I would have to have the normal 42-day timeframe, so if I knew by December 7th meeting, let's say, that you all wanted to, if you sent this forward as it was going through its process with planning, I believe we can, before it would go to a town meeting, planning would have to review it, planning scheduled to review it in January, I believe.
January 13th.
So I could conceivably be setting up a town meeting, have a warrant opened, then have it go to planning, which it's going to anyway. If I could have a warrant open December 21st, that would then start me doing the work to get the motion together, planning to get its, its vote formalized, and then set up a town meeting 42 days from whenever we close the warrant, which is seven days, so December 28th we close the warrant, then basically by mid-February, we could, if the board wanted, have a special meeting for this. Why this would be worth hosting a special meeting? I think it's, in and of itself, would take a night of any town meeting, very deservedly, because there are going to be a lot of questions, the public's going to have a lot of questions. There are concerns about timing. Mr. Zabani had talked about some timing concerning the Stoughton Redevelopment Authority, money they've invested starting on their urban renewal plan. So I think it would be helpful to do. There's always a minimal cost to, to doing a town meeting, but it is a minimal financial cost. We could choose or not choose to do that remotely as well, because it's just simply one article. And people, again, we would open up, I could set up Zoom informationals for anybody to sit in, and obviously it's not one I'm going to take a lead on, I would participate, but we would have John at those, and we could do the same type of thing we're doing for special, for this special. So I would ask the board for consideration on that. You don't have to let me know until December 7th, and then I could have a warrant ready to open December 21st, which time would work if we closed it the 28th or the first week of January, for it to then be reviewed by planning, which would have to happen for any zoning article, would have to have a planning review before it went to town meeting.
Yeah.
So I ask you to keep that in the back of your mind for a December 7th consideration of whether or not you want me to move forward on a special town meeting. The board doesn't have to decide that tonight, but I certainly would like you to keep that in your, back of your minds if that's something you'd like me to do. I do support doing it. In discussions we've had with planning, Mr. Zabani, and John, the consultants, I think we all agree that this is something that should probably move forward at this point as soon as we can, but we held, because again, there was a question, concern, information hadn't been out when we needed it to be out. We didn't want to rush this process. It's far too important to rush, and it is a zoning article, so if it were to go down because people felt they didn't have enough information, we can't bring it back for a couple of years, and I just don't want to see that happen. This is so important that we get moving. The other thing is that it holds up development, and it holds up developers who may be waiting. And every few months, just like the, you know, the reasons that we are looking at getting the fire station done in a special, because we don't want to wait another six months on interest rates and construction and all of those things, developers are dealing with the exact same things that we're concerned about. So there is an urgency to this, to make it worth, if you will, calling another one. The board is the one who calls those meetings, it's, it's not a moderator call, it is a board call, we discussed this, I know we were doing this last one. So that would be my, my recommendation, but again, you all don't have to vote on that tonight, you could, but you certainly don't have to.
I also want to offer two possible remedies that would even make something, something we can, we can complete today. One is if this is essentially the same bylaw that you presented to us last time, the last time it was presented to us, we voted exactly for that, for this, right? So that it, that it would be returned back to the planning board for, for review. And so in a sense, perhaps that, that vote was all you had, actually needed, and you, and you're good to go. If, if, I'm not an attorney though, I don't know if this has changed in a material way.
Well, so Steve, I'd like to get the information to you. Would you prefer it electronically or physically delivered?
Well, if, I mean, if you have copies here, you could just give it to us now, I think we could just vote now. That was the other one.
Yeah, could I grab them, please? Thank you.
Could I ask one question at some point here? I will.
No, that's okay. We get another, we get another, for what it's worth, I mean, just having it go back to the, the planning board and for public hearings, we, we do get another look at this once it's, it's done through that process, and we get a choice of whether or not to get this will go on a future warrant. So it's not, our job here isn't done. So if any member wants to, you know, review these and spend more time with them, I do ask them, you know, we perhaps allow the planning board, the planning department, the opportunity to start their processes now, and then when we get to the, our next phase in this, that we vote based on the materials that we have presented to us. But that, that is my proposal.
I couldn't understand what you just said.
Sure, I'll, I'll speak up and also perhaps talk a little slower because the Italian was coming out of me. So the, first, the Mass General Law requires that once we've received it, that within two weeks, we forward it to the planning, planning board. Regardless of how we feel about it, it shall, you know, be sent back to the planning board for review. So we've never received it. We could wait two weeks, but our obligation to forward it back to the planning board doesn't change, so we can send it now. Our role as, as a, in this process, right now is, is mostly just a formality, but whether or not it gets inserted into a future warrant, at that point, we, the content of, of the, of the materials themselves are something that we would be able to decide whether to include it or not to include it. At this point, our, our forwarding it to the planning board is essentially compulsory. And so I, I'm satisfied that right now, making a motion to, to forward this to the, the planning board, for them to begin their review.
But, but if, if we forward it to the planning board for them to have a public hearing, I think would be disingenuous of us to then say, oh no, we're not going to, we're not going to insert that in a warrant. I mean, I think quite frankly, that we have a responsibility to make sure that we have reviewed the material that, that goes with the, with the article. And I'm willing to do that within the next few days. If Monday or Tuesday is the time period to do it, then I'm sitting here and my job is to try to do the things that I should be doing, but I'm not going to short-circuit that, very honestly, and I...
My, sorry, I apologize. Why don't we do this? Why don't we post a meeting tomorrow, Thursday night? That'll give you a couple of days to review it, the board members, and then we come back here for one item to send it back to the planning board.
That's fine.
Okay, so I will say, why don't we just do that?
Why don't you...
Tomorrow morning?
If you post tomorrow morning, I don't think that means...
No, that's not...
All right, then.
Then Monday, we could do it Monday, couldn't we?
You'd do it Monday.
You can, you can, if you're going to do this remotely, you can do it anytime you want. I, I mean, you could do it, as long as you do it Monday and you post it as a remote meeting, you can all pop on and vote.
Or we could come here and, and vote on Monday.
Whatever, I have no problem with that. Let's just...
Joe, will you need me in attendance at that meeting?
I don't, well, I would, if I were you, I'd be here.
Okay.
I mean, you know, in case there are questions, but, you know, hopefully it's just a quick vote.
Okay.
And what we could do, could everybody make a 4 o'clock meeting here Monday?
I can, but I mean, I'm...
I don't know if everybody else...
I'm pretty footloose, you know?
I mean, because it, yeah, I mean, can everybody make a 4 o'clock meeting on Monday?
I can't, but I don't really think I'm...
Okay, no, you, no...
Serious at that one.
This hopefully should be, you know, a vote and be done with it, so.
I, I'm, I will, might be tough, but this is important enough, I'll make it happen.
All right. What's a faster way? Okay, what, what is a faster way that we could, because we can't vote tonight because we just got this dropped in front of us, and I'm not going to stuff it through until board members feel comfortable that, of what they've read. And send it back there, and if there's any questions that really alter this thing, I don't think it's fair to the planning board as well that we say, okay, well, you, you got through this thing, and, you know, it, whether it would be done before, when would you be advertising, John, your public hearing?
Oh, if it's on January 13th, it would need to be advertised on January 5th, and then whatever the last Wednesday in December happens to be.
So what's the problem then if we just meet Monday?
Yeah, there's no, there's no problem.
Listen, I, I mean...
There's no problem, Joe, absolutely no problem.
And does the remote, there's still notice, we still have to do the 48 hours.
Yeah, either way, yeah.
So I mean, it doesn't change, so...
No.
The, the vote, if, if we're not going to vote on it, the vote's going to take place in 48 hours or later. If we come in Monday, it should be enough time, and we get in the one article, you know, one item, we get in and get out.
So if it's remote, I'll log on, if it's here, or just come upstairs?
Well, again, if it's Monday, it's going to be...
Yep, that's perfect.
4 o'clock, is that a workday for you?
Oh, yeah, that's perfect.
All right, so if it's 4 o'clock, you should still be here.
Yeah.
So, and, and then it'll just take another couple of days.
Great.
You know, because I just don't see, listen, I would, I would have no problem voting on it because I've been, I've asked more questions, I think I've done my homework, but again, I don't know what's in this.
Right.
So, again, so it, and that's the fastest we can do it, that's the fastest we can do it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I may have a conflict for Monday, but I am suggesting Friday as an option, Friday anytime during the day. And because I have not, I may have questions on this, on this document, so I would like Mr. Charbonneau to be available to answer the question, and chances are, it will be a short meeting, but...
Mm-hmm.
Is anyone available on Friday?
I am.
Is that a better day for everyone than, than Monday?
Friday works for me.
Friday, I can't do anything unless it was a late, late thing.
What is late, John?
4 o'clock.
That's, why not?
I mean, you know, I mean, I...
I, I would ask, though, staff is not here at 4 o'clock on a Friday?
Yeah, staff, yeah, staff's not here, you know, afternoon.
So, I mean, if you want a remote, I don't...
If it's remote, I would be happy to log on quickly.
Yeah.
We need to do a remote.
All right, but what's the difference of one day? Why, if we were going to do Friday, why is Monday any different? I mean, you know...
Because I don't think she can make Monday.
Oh, you can't, I'm sorry, okay, all right. Yeah, I mean, boy, if everything works better for you guys during the day, if it works better for you, you do it, you know, and, and the three of yous can vote. I mean, it's...
Friday during the, at 4 o'clock, remote would, seems to work.
Okay. All right, so we'll do that.
Great, thank you.
That's exciting.
Can I ask a question, please? Did, did, did you put this on the website, your website as well?
I don't believe that's on the website, that was for your information.
The strike-through, I don't, I don't...
No, the strike-through is not on the website.
The, the, the ins and outs, you're, this is the...
That's, that's simply the, the strike-throughs of where the references to the Central Business District are, that's, no, that's not on the website.
No, well, but people are going to vote on that.
I can put it on the website.
I mean, it would seem to me...
Okay, we'll put it on the website tomorrow.
That, that you would want to do that and have all of the information that people are going to vote on...
Yep, we'll put it on the website tomorrow.
Available. I'm not running this...
Yes, we'll put it on the website tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So moving on, for our 8 o'clock appointment, I would entertain a motion to reopen the meeting, public hearing of the Class 2 license application of Billy Auto Sales, 1215, 1254 Washington Street, which was continued from the November 2nd meeting. Is there a motion to be made? Most have been made, most have been made by Mr. Gito, second by Ms. Roberts. All in favor of the motion? Mr. Kaybee? Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to clarify if you were intending to skip ahead and...
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 that was just an error on my part because I was looking down here, and I'm sorry. If you, Nathan, why don't you, just come forward if you can just grab the mic? I don't, how much time do you need?
I had asked for about 10 minutes.
10 minutes, okay. Nicole, if you could just give us 10 minutes, I'm sorry, that was my error. You know, I was looking at the public hearing and, like I said, was so over that. Sorry, Nathan, you know, my error.
No problem.
Dave, did you want to come up and join us as well? You're a member of the committee still, right?
He's good.
Okay, well, if you're a member, though, come on up. There may be somebody that, something that you can answer as well.
Do I need to, is this on or do I have to hold the button?
If it's green, push the button. If it's green, it's on. Make sure it's real close to you.
Excellent.
And Dave, welcome back. It's good to see you again. I know that your committee was kind of spinning their wheels for a little while. We look forward to getting some things going.
All right, well, thank you all for the opportunity to address the board tonight. I know it's been a while since our committee has come before you. And so for those of you who may not know me, my name is Nathan Cleveland. I'm the Chair of the Energy and Sustainability Committee. What I'm hoping to do tonight is to briefly summarize what our committee's mission is and some of our recent achievements, and then provide more substantive updates on some of the activities that we've been heavily involved in recently in service of that overall mission, and to highlight some areas-
Could I interrupt you just for a second?
Yes.
Do you have something written, I think you gave something to Ms. Roberts? I'm not asking that you give it to, to us now, but perhaps when you get back to where you can get that information to us, that you do it?
Sure, I hadn't intended there to be any sort of visual aids. I simply had outlined some of my thoughts, and it was, I was informed that the Vice Chair might want to see those in advance, and so I sent them to her. I also gave access to Deb to that document on my Google Drive. So if you'd like to see it, she has access to it digitally, but it's merely an outline of some remarks that I'm planning to make this evening. This isn't a data-driven presentation, and I'm not requesting any formal action from the board tonight. I merely want to provide some updates and put some things in front of you for consideration that you will be potentially dealing with in the future. So, that's all. Okay. Anyway, so as I was saying, I want to just highlight a few areas that we think that it's important for the town to support and move forward in the future when they're up for consideration. And I'll be happy to answer any clarifying or follow-up questions at the end of my remarks. I am going to be sensitive to time, given where we're at. So briefly, our mission as the Energy and Sustainability Committee is that we're a Citizens Advisory Committee to the Select Board, and we're focused on issues pertaining to energy consumption, greenhouse gas emissions, recycling and waste reduction, water consumption and wastewater management. Put a different way, our overall goal is to support the town across, across a wide range of activities in securing a more sustainable, cost-effective, healthy and stable future for our community. So some of the things that we've been involved with recently, we were critically important to the original Green Communities designation that the town received, including helping to get a greenhouse gas emissions baseline study conducted, as well as getting the stretch code enacted and the initial $2,000, $200,000 grant that came along with that initial designation. We also implemented the Bay State Textiles Waste Diversion bins that you may have seen at the local schools. That diverts waste from landfills, and to date, that's diverted over 200,000 pounds of waste. And any of the proceeds from that are given directly to the school PTAs for their associated bin. We've advocated for the hiring of an energy manager. We have provided continued support and guidance on subsequent Green Community grant applications, which has helped bring additional grant money into the town to support important projects. And we also hosted, in the before COVID times, a community gathering that promoted local vendors, energy efficiency, and of course, local beer that some of you may have attended. There are four areas of current focus that we've been working on that I wanted to provide some updates to the Select Board to, to tonight. The first one is continued support and engagement with the energy manager that was recently hired. So as I mentioned, our committee has been advocating for the hiring of an energy manager, and that's simply someone whose sole job it is to focus on the energy-related aspects of running a town and its buildings for several years now, either as a full-time, part-time, or shared employee for our community. And this is not simply because it's the right thing to do, or because we want to ensure positive environmental outcomes are achieved, though those things are of course both true and real benefits of this work, but because it's a sound business decision. Tracking, reducing and managing energy use across town facilities through things like benchmarking, energy supply contracting, and energy efficiency projects reduces municipal energy and operating costs, as well as improves our local building stock. And that's not to mention the non-energy benefits that that work delivers as well. So after a lot of conversations and a lot of work, we recently were able to hire a shared energy manager who's supporting the town in doing project scoping, reporting and grant writing for the Green Communities program. And I'd like to thank Dr. Grimm, as well as Paul and Tom down at DPW for their help in getting that off the ground and finding the initial money, and supporting this and recognizing the value of that collaboration with an energy manager to help the town improve service and operations in this critical area. As I said, and as I did outline in a presentation to this board several years ago, modest investments in the capacity and expertise that an energy manager brings can pay off in spades, and is a model that other communities across the US, and in particular here in Massachusetts, and our neighbor in Rhode Island, have used to great success and financial benefit. I mean, the reality here is that municipal staff are stretched thin and wearing too many hats already, and energy-related issues too often are not given the focus they deserve. Within two months of coming onboard, the energy manager we've contracted with was able to conduct facility benchmarking of our town buildings, draft a grant application that if awarded, will bring in additional $200,000 in project-specific support, as well as administrative funding to the town to partially offset her costs, as well as submit an annual report for prior work that was done through this program. It's critical that we continue to engage with and support an energy manager like this, and that will allow for her to secure other grant and administrative dollars to support key clean energy investments across our municipal buildings and properties. And increasing the initial scope of that work to go simply, beyond simply the Green Communities work, will enable these benefits to be realized in our school buildings, as well as for years to come. And as the energy savings stack up from these projects that are implemented, they'll more than pay for the modest upfront investment in this energy manager's expertise and capacity. We therefore ask that continuing to financially support this work to the extent that grant funds don't fully cover it, be a priority investment for the town moving forward as you think about future budgets. And we're also happy to work with the energy manager to facilitate regular updates to this board on both the accomplishments and the benefits of her work specifically, if so desired. The second thing I wanted to talk about briefly is municipal aggregation. This is a program that Stone has participated in before, and has been considering rejoining as well. This is a program that locks in energy prices for and aggregates the municipal electric load. And so especially in the face of fluctuating global energy prices, providing price certainty over a fixed time horizon allows the program participants to understand what their fixed energy costs will be for electricity over a long time horizon, and allows them, over that time horizon, to save on their utility costs. Structuring these as an opt-out program provides upfront education to allow the citizens to make an informed decision regarding their participation in the program. And there's no change in how they engage with their electric bill at all. They're still provided electricity by the same company, the bills are unchanged, and their bills are paid to the same utility. It simply provides them a more advantageous price structure. Moreover, the exciting thing for our committee about this is the ability to support renewable energy. And aggregation programs allow communities to determine the renewable energy content of the mix that they contract for. And so making the default choice that's part of your aggregation a greener option shows that we're supporting additional renewable energy development and cleaner energy at a very marginal price difference. Obviously, the pricing is dependent on when you're going out to bid. But when I last looked at the pricing earlier this year, it would probably amount to about a $10 a year or less bill increase for the average home to support significantly more renewable energy development and procure a cleaner energy mix. These programs can also provide options for customers to opt in, if they so choose, to an energy mix that is up to 100% renewable, and they can then pay the premium for that if they wish. Again, it provides more choice and supports renewable energy. And the last thing on this program that I'd like to mention is that it does provide the opportunity through its structure to generate modest revenues for the town through an adder fee on the kilowatt hours that are part of your aggregation. This is usually something on the order of a thousandth of a cent or less. So again, the returns are relatively modest, but they can be directed to a separate fund to invest in green projects. Things like supporting an energy manager, or, you know, thinking about downtown redevelopment, perhaps installing electric vehicle charging stations and infrastructure downtown. As such, we'd encourage the board to strongly consider supporting this and empower the town to enter into an aggregation agreement that has a green energy component, and to lock in pricing when the market is favorable. Of course, working with the town manager and our consultant to determine when those optimal conditions are for purchasing electricity. The third program that I'd like to talk briefly about is the CPACE, or Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy Program. This is a, in our opinion, low-hanging fruit opportunity to provide capital access to commercial businesses here in town. And that empowers a third-party, both third-party capital providers and a third-party program administrator to work together to solicit and approve, and then finance cash flow-positive clean energy improvements at the commercial facilities in town. Again, it's managed and coordinated by a third-party. Mass Development presented this to the board earlier this year. And they work with the borrowers and participants to evaluate and approve these projects, and they provide that financing that can cover up to 100% of costs, which eliminates the need for business owners to put upfront capital, which is often an impediment to development. The town would simply need to vote to authorize participation in the program, and then if any businesses do choose to participate, include on their property tax the payment details through the normal billing cycle. So we view this as a very low effort opportunity on our part to allow the market to support investments in the commercial industrial sector in town, and ultimately help these businesses bottom line, and improve the building stock in our community without us having to invest any of our own funds. This is something that's active in 23 states, including our neighbors in Rhode Island, Connecticut, and New York. And we're happy to work with you and Mass Development to address any concerns or questions you might have on that program before making a consideration about it in the future. The final thing that I wanted to address this evening is a warrant article for an upcoming town meeting about a plastic bag ban. And this would phase in a ban on single-use plastic bags in town over time if approved. Single-use plastic bags are energy-intensive, wasteful, and polluting. I think we've all probably seen them stuck in trees and bushes around town, or clogging up the storm drains and causing things to back up. And there are plenty of other options for carrying goods home from stores that have less of an environmental impact. Stone's also behind the curve here. Many other communities have implemented similar policies, including several neighboring communities, without any negative impacts on businesses or residents. We think this is a small but necessary step in helping to reduce wasteful, energy-intensive products from our community, and show real leadership and commitment to addressing environmental impacts. And not to mention, it would result in us then having a cleaner and more beautiful community. We endorse that warrant article and would encourage others to consider supporting it as well. So in conclusion, you know, each of the items that I've discussed this evening have been recent focus areas of ours as a committee and things that we've been working hard to try and move forward. And that's all part of the service of our larger mission in improving things here in Stoughton. We hope that the board and the town will get behind these initiatives, or in the case of the energy manager, continuing to support that as a critical investment that will pay big dividends for our community, and join us in charting a responsible path forward. And if anyone listening here in the audience tonight or over the internet finds these or other similar topics interesting, I would encourage you to please consider coming to one of our future meetings, or joining the committee as a formal member. I thank you all for your time this evening, and I'm willing to answer any questions that you may have now, or I can provide my contact information for offline follow-up in the interest of time. Thank you very much.
Any questions to the board, Mr. Gito?
Perhaps I should ask them offline rather than here. But I have a number of them. They relate mostly to what have you done to help the town and the citizens in terms of saving money. But I don't want you to answer the question now, but it seems important that we understand how effective you are in terms of helping, helping us save money and try to save the planet. The cost of fuel is going up very dramatically, and we need to think about that as we put together a budget. And I'm sure that you've done a lot to help, but I don't know all those things.
Sure, happy to craft a response and send that to the board offline.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes, Mr. Cleveland, it's nice meeting you. Are any of these initiatives that you're talking about, are they in alignment with what the state is doing? Or is this something that you just identified, there is a need and you're going to address them? I'm just looking for alignment.
Yeah, absolutely. I would say the answer to that is both. I think this is something that we as a committee feel is very important, but also the actions that we're discussing and presenting are in line with overall state policy. Things like the Global Warming Solutions Act. The Green Communities Program is a state DOER-funded opportunity. That's been a priority of the Baker Administration for years. And I don't have the exact numbers offhand, but I would say 80% or more of the communities across Massachusetts are now green communities and are participating in this program, or have participated in this program at least once. So we view the actions that we're advocating for both, both as something that we as a committee see as a need, but also things that are in alignment with overall state policy as well.
The second question I have is, for your first or initial project, when will you need funding for this first and initial project?
Which project specifically, are you referencing the energy manager component?
So you're going to prioritize your work. So if you line all of your projects in, in a row, which is the first one that will need funding, so you would need to come back to us and get approval?
Sure. None of the things that I have proposed currently need funding, which is what makes them attractive. So the energy manager is already active and has already been funded. And the vision for that position is that by making this initial investment, which we have made, that their work will then bring in additional dollars, which they are already in the process of doing through the grant application that they've recently submitted, to provide a revenue source to continue supporting that work in the long term. Our ask would be that as you think about the budget moving forward, and Dr. Grimm can give you probably a more exact sense of the outlay and what may be coming in, obviously that grant won't be awarded for a number of months, what any delta there might be between what she's able to bring in in administrative funds and what we may need to fully support that. Our ask would be that if there is a delta, that the town continue to prioritize making that investment, which would be in the order of a few thousand dollars potentially. Thank you very much.
Mr. Kaybee?
Yeah, thanks for coming. I appreciate it. Thanks for the presentation. It's definitely great to hear about the work that you guys are doing and have been doing for a very long time. I know you've been working very diligently to, to offer the, the town the opportunity to really get this energy manager, and you've been advocating for that for several years, at least, I think many years. And so I'm glad to see that finally come to be. With, with any sort of new technology that we have, many of them come from a place of suffering, right? Usually you start by, you know, having a lot of infections before you have to worry about medication, right? It isn't until something starts to, starts to break that people realize they need to do things differently. And with things like construction and energy management- And with things like construction and energy management, you know, we've just had such a, you know, easy time, you know, getting oil, getting, building things that are not sustainable for decades. And I think that we're starting to feel the pinch because of that, and I think people are starting to take it much more seriously than they had. It's a shame, you know, but it is where we are. So going forward, being really on the front end of this and being forward-thinking, I think you guys have done a tremendous job protecting us in a way that probably people will not appreciate at any point, but I certainly do. But that's excellent. I know you have a lot of things you guys are thinking about and talking about. There are just so many areas within municipal government that I would just, you know, love to hear any input you have, things like zoning, right? Things, you know, our electrical infrastructure, which I'm sure energy manager will have opinions on, but we have a very old infrastructure for electricity. Questions, I know I've discussed with you in the past, any ways to make, you know, our collection of trash and recycling and other refuse, anything that might be compostable. How do we, you know, formalize that in a way that's beneficial to the town and, you know, if it also happens to be financially better, which surprisingly often is the case when you, not always at first, but sometimes you get shocked. I've done a lot of work recently discussing passive housing, and I'm absolutely amazed at what people have figured out. A lot of this is in Europe, but I think it's coming over to the U.S. now, where you can build housing that's cheaper than the current, you know, current building. It'll last four times as long. It's safer, cleaner, and less expensive to maintain. And it's like, it's crazy that people aren't doing it. So any sort of input on you that you guys would have, and your committee has on those types of initiatives, we might not think to ask. So if you have something and there's anything that we can do to move those kinds of initiatives forward, please bring them to us, because it's going to benefit us all in the long run. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Selectman Kavy. Happy to bring things forward, and one of the things that we're looking to do is make these exchanges a bit more regular and to promote a bit more information flow between the board and our work, as well as the work that the energy manager will be doing.
Well, thank you very much, gentlemen, for coming forward and giving us the update. I would ask you, if you can, you know, at some time, contact the town manager if there's any need that you have on structuring, you know, getting input from any of the department heads, and we should have an open dialogue in whether they are just information you provide to the board, or if you have some things you want to do, move forward, but, you know, I'd say please make sure it's run through the staff as well so that, you know, they know how it's going to affect them, you know, instead of it being the other way before it gets to us for approval. But, you know, I'm open to hearing, you know, your ideas moving forward.
There you go.
Did you have anything yet? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Sorry for the screw-up on my part.
No problem. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll go back to our eight o'clock hearing, continued from May 2nd, which the motion, I'm going to call for the vote on the motion, which was made by Mr. Gito, seconded by Ms. Roberts, to open the hearing from the continued date of November 2nd. On the motion, Mr. Kavy?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
And Chair votes in favor. Okay, so, gentlemen, if you could identify yourself for the record and...
Billy Taub.
Fong Taap.
Okay, great. All right, so we have the updated information. We have the updated parking plan that's here, and I can see that there was a significant decrease in that. So I'm going to, because I did bring this up, and I see the changes that were made. I double-checked with the measurements that we use for parking spaces based on your 111 feet on both ends, and it works right out to the same amount of cars that would be based on the parking, you know, for a normal parking space. The only thing that I would ask my colleagues to do is to, if they're inclined to vote tonight, which I will vote, is the signs that you put out there as customer parking, so leaving your building on the left, you have five spaces that are assigned to customer parking?
They are assigned. I ordered signs, but they're not up yet.
Okay, all right. So that's what I was going to say, is that they have signs so that nobody else parks in those spots.
Correct.
And then you have three parking spaces that I believe is for the tailing garage? Is that correct?
Yes. So there's eight customers parking all together.
Right, okay. So the signs, what will they be on the building?
They'll be on the building.
On the building? And then the other ones, are they going on the other building or are they going to be mounted into the ground, I think?
No, they'll be mounted.
Right, okay, all right.
Not on the other building, because then it would be...
And then you've got only three vehicles that'll be out in the front?
Correct.
Okay, okay. All right. So with that, questions to the board? Mr. Gito? Mr. Kavy?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, and I think we'll wait a second, if you don't mind, for, and then we saw that the other issue with the building inspector was resolved?
Correct.
Okay, we had all the updates, the paperwork that was here, and there was, I know there's a document about 35 pages, I think, on the workman's comp issue that was resolved as well. So it, so there won't be any, I'll just ask questions then. There won't be any cars on that lot that are not being offered for sale other than the eight spots that are identified here? All right, we're not going to be taking cars in in addition and, you know, any other vehicles that'll be on the property?
No. What would, no. What would they be on the property for?
Okay, well, it happens. We denied a permit one time, and then I think two days later, 30 vehicles showed up on the property, and we were told we're fixing them for a client. Okay, so...
No, there's no repairs being done on premise.
Okay, all right, okay. Because it's, we're just getting, I don't know what it is, you know, and we're just getting too many operations like this, and you can only buy a car in so many locations. I don't know what it is, you know, and...
I understand that. This has been a used car lot.
No, I understand, but it was the business, you know, ceased, and, you know, if I honestly, if we had known this was coming, I probably would have said we should stop them, because you can only have so many places to buy a used car. And the licenses are, in my opinion, I've always believed, you know, what I was taught in this position, is to serve the public. We're serving the public in Stoughton with used cars. There's no two ways about it, you know, so I think we'll, I plan on voting in favor of this, and I know that you had a major play in this, Nicole, in getting this updated, and you were ahead of it when I mentioned the signs, because I was, that was what I was going to do, was make the vote contingent on the signs. So we will accept, you know, contingent on the vote, of course, except the parking plan as described, it's going to be a part of the license. If the signs come down for any reason, or they're not, or they're being used improperly, that's going to be a violation of a license, and we'll have a hearing and have you back.
Okay.
Okay, and we just, you know, I wish you luck in your business. So on this, questions to the board? Mr. Kavy?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Ms. Roberts?
I have no question.
And Mr. Gito?
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. I'm sorry, on the public hearing end, just to make sure, Ms. Walsh is the only one. Ms. Walsh, do you have any questions of this application? Where it's, do you have any questions where it's a public hearing? There's nobody else, so I'm asking you.
I don't think these folks need any more grief.
Okay. All right, so is there a motion to be made?
Motion to close the hearing.
Motion to be made by Mr. Gito, closed the hearing, seconded by Ms. Roberts, on the motion to close the hearing. All in favor? Mr. Kavy?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gito? Chair votes in favor. Is there a motion to be made?
I move that we accept the class, we approve the Class II application for Billy's auto sales.
Okay. Is there a second? Motion to be made by Ms. Roberts, seconded by Mr. Kavy. Any further questions of the board? Mr. Gito? Ms. Roberts?
No.
Mr. Kavy?
Nope.
Okay, on the motion to approve? Mr. Kavy?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gito? Chair votes in favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicole, thanks for your help on this.
No problem.
Okay. Okay, and where did that go? Okay, consent agenda. Item A, okay. Mr. Gito?
Second.
Mr. Gito made a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Ms. Roberts? Yeah, all right, Ms. Roberts approved, seconded the motion. Mr. Kavy, thirded it. So on the motion, Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Kavy?
Yes.
Chair votes in favor.
Very excited to have the Holiday Festival of Lights back.
There you go. Okay.
It's a great event.
So, executive session. What is the wish of the board? If, I'm sorry?
I said, we have everybody here.
Right, we do, but it is quarter of 10. I'll be honest with you, with the lateness of the meeting, I can only speak for myself, is that I have to wake up at 3:00 in the morning.
You have to wake up at 3:00 in the morning. You ought to get to bed.
Yeah, right.
Let me be clear. I have started this process, I believe, in September. And I know it takes time to get things done, but like the budget, we need to deal with things like this and find time to do it. You know, I'm going to stop, and I would, on your question, I would suggest that we not have the executive session tonight, because I want you to be bright-eyed and bushy-tailed in the morning, and I want to be bright-eyed and bushy-tailed, too.
Well, again, and I appreciate, and I appreciate that, Mr. Gito, you know, but I will point out, you know, and it's difficult to set times, and if we need to come back to an issue, then that's what we should do, because, you know, we're just so far over our agenda right now. And again, we try to put times on these, but we just sometimes, I understand questions become questions, but we have to try where we can keep these schedules so we can get things done. If we have to come back to it, we will, but, you know, we're just so far over this one...
Well, maybe what we need to do is figure out how we're going to do that, Joe.
Well, what we're going to have to do is just appoint more time to things. I mean, we're going to have to just have less on the agenda, and that's going to resolve...
Then if we do that, that means that we need to have more meetings, because we don't have less things to do.
No, exactly. We'll have to do more meetings.
Which is why I suggested having a schedule for what things need to happen, and...
Well, we do. We have things, and then we appropriate the, what would be the, you know, using your best experience, enough time to discuss the issue, and then we have something like happened here. The, you know, the zoning presentation was told to me, what, 10 minutes?
I could have told you that was going to be a half hour.
Right.
At least.
Mr. Charbonneau said 10 minutes, we'll be in, you know, and, okay? So even if it was a half hour, it wasn't a half hour.
And I will...
No, that it was, a lot of questions came out. So nobody has the crystal ball as to how many questions are going to be on an issue.
And I will tell you, when we went to a meeting a week, it still didn't solve the problem. The meeting still went till 11:00.
Yeah, well, I'll tell you, when we started this in April, we were getting out of here, as you remember.
We were.
We were getting out of here at 9:30 and 10:00 at night.
Every other week. With two meetings a month.
You know, so with two meetings a month, and we can't do that now with less of an agenda. We're having a hard time with it. So, you know, we're just going to have to put less on it, and it's going to result in more meetings, you know, and, you know, if that's where the board wants to go, that's where we go.
What other solution do we have? I mean, we can, we cannot ask questions...
The solution is, we put out more time, and then we take some other items, we keep them in the background, that if they can use, if we can do them, you know, and bring them forward and get things going, then we can do that.
I could offer one thing that would, if there are questions on things ahead of time that aren't things that need to be a public discussion, you all can email me or the staff with those questions and not be violating any open meetings. If you have an informational question on something that comes out to you, that really you don't feel the need to have that question answered in a public forum, or you can bring it up in the public forum, but you've already answered, gotten the answer and want to address it as a comment, you could save a lot of time that way, and we're happy to provide those, that information to any individual ahead of time.
Well, as you know, a lot of that stuff is not ready until just before the meeting.
Sometimes, but there's some things we can...
I mean, like this one here, I don't know what happened with that. That's your problem to deal with, you know, but it sure as hell was a, you know, a fly in the ointment to get something presented that thick at the end of the presentation. All right, now, I know one gentleman was pretty upset.
Deb is, yeah.
I mean, oh, listen, we don't, I don't want to even get into it tonight, but again, that's the things that we need to control. So, you know, I'll meet with you and Deb, and we'll get things in a different way so that when this information is set and ready to go on an agenda, it goes out to the board before it's on the agenda with whatever information is there, and the board then can ask some questions and have a little bit more time to do due diligence on the issue.
And again, you're welcome to ask those questions ahead if they're questions that really are just your personal knowledge that don't need to be part of a larger discussion.
Because to Mr. Gito's point, we get this a couple of days before the meeting, and then the ideas start popping into your head, the questions start coming in, and then it just takes on a world of its own in some cases. So if we can get these things vetted quicker, get them so that they're ready to go on an agenda, and it goes out to the board the week ahead, any questions that would come beforehand, you know, then we could get that time to get those questions answered. To our point, we can email you. I think, I can't speak for anyone else, I've done that many times, you know, and it saves me the time of asking that here. So we'll work on a process like that to see if we can get that done, so that when these things are here, you know, and I don't know what kind of a, you know, a tracking system, you know, that we can put into that and get this stuff out to the board as quick as possible, whether it's put into, again, a shared folder, you know, with the exception of Selectman Carrara, that he needs the paper, so we'll get him the paper end of it. And then say, if you've got any questions, please get them back by this date on the given information. If you've got a question, then you can seek that answer ahead of time when everybody's then had a chance. What we can do is put a check sheet off, you know, one of Mr. Kavy's great, you know, checkoff list. We can just check that off, and when everybody's done reviewing it and, you know, is ready to go on the agenda, we can do that. You know, because we can do everything we can inside the building, but, you know, again, there's no crystal ball as to, you know, the thoughts that individuals are going to have. We all have a different, you know, diverse thought process here, and, you know, it's like shooting dice when we get here. You don't know what's going to happen. So maybe we can do something that just allows a pre-vetting of the issues, and then after everybody's had the chance to review them, then we put them on the agenda for action.
As a, just as a member of the board, you know, between you, Mr. Chairman, and our vice chair, I trust you guys to come up with a system and follow along with whatever you think is best to make the meetings, you know, more timely. I don't want to cut anybody off, but I also, you know, right now we're losing valuable sleep time, so I do make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to be made and seconded to adjourn. On the motion, Mr. Gito?
Aye.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
And Mr. Kavy?
Yes.
Chair votes in favor. All right.[1776.91]